Alright ladies and gentlemen, welcome back. Night City Council is in session. We are here to answer the community's questions. I have with me the illustrious Mayor of Balance Town, James Hutt from our Telltale and Games. James, thank you so much for joining me.
Oh, thanks for having me.
The council is in session. Please, all cell phone devices on vibrate. Don't interrupt, wait your turn. A point of privilege to James Hutt, our mayor. And you're gonna be answering some questions today. First of all, James, I want to know how you're doing. I haven't seen you in a month and I miss you and I hope that you're doing well.
Well, it's been pretty hot up in the Northwest, so we've been staying cool. And drinking a lot of water, drinking some Fresca.
You always got the hot Fresca dude, you got that good.
Not sponsored.
No, not yet.
Not sponsored. Continental Brands Fresca.
Oh man, they just get their dirty mitts in everything, don't they?
It's delicious.
Yeah.
Every time I see the phrase "less than 1% juice", I think about Continental Brands.
Oh, that's such a Continental Brands thing, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Except the percentage they would have had of the juice would be zero and yes, that is technically less than one.
Oh. There's a lot of crazy like label laws. Like especially, have you seen the things with dog food? If it says like "with chicken", then it only needs to have like 30% chicken in it.
Yeah.
But if it says "chicken food" or something, then it has to have like a higher percentage. It's crazy, like no, how would we know that?
The craziest thing is that those laws are different in different countries. So what might be considered beer in the United States may not be considered beer in Germany.
Oh man, how about the Subway debacle where they're like, "this isn't bread"? They can't classify the Subway bread as bread. If that's not, if that's not cyberpunk, I don't know what is.
Bread-like product, everyone. Bread-like product.
Bread-like product. British. Well, it's good to see you and happy spirits. Thank you for all your hard work. You guys are churning out DLCs left and right, giving us content on this show. So I don't know if that's like a direct response, where like, hey, we gotta have something every month?
Oh, we're making so many DLCs, let's make a show.
Yeah, that's it. I love it. And I appreciate you guys thinking about me for that. Um, so yeah, so why don't we answer some questions from the community? And then we'll get into talking about two DLCs. One of them is brand new. It is Night City Weather. But do not be fooled by the name. It also applies for any city or any situation. It's a weather DLC and it's actually really cool. I can't wait to get into that. And then we're gonna talk about.
I'm looking forward to it too.
Yeah, exactly. And we're gonna also talk about one of the first DLCs that you guys ever released, which is Old Guns Never Die. Is it the first DLC? It might even be the first. I seem to remember.
I don't remember. It might be. It was really early.
Yeah, it was really early in the beginning and basically it is a guide to converting weapons from 2020 to Cyberpunk Red. And I have a Cyberpunk 2020 resource here, Home of the Brave. And we are, and there's some really cool weapons in there, like a lot of military stuff. So we're gonna see if we can, you know, see how fast and easy it is to do, which spoiler alert, it's pretty fast and easy. And show you guys examples, so you can have them in your games. You know what I mean? You can have named guns in your game, like the uh, Arasaka Light 20mm. Whatever that is. Sounds heavy. Sounds mean. Uh, but yeah, let's get into it. So first question, let me just open it up over here. First question is a fun one. How do you, James, or I, John John, apply humanity loss outside of cyberware?
I've got a question. We do these in a timed segment, right? How long do we got on the clock? If that increases the drama of the moment.
Oh, you're right. Uh.
You can't just do that. It's episode, what, three?
Yeah, it's episode three.
You can't forget the, you can't forget the rules of a core segment of the show.
What do we do? What's the drama? Where, I don't know where the drama is.
Drama is I only have a certain amount of time to answer these questions.
So we're gonna, I'm so lost, James. I don't know what you want from me.
Maybe I dreamed it. Maybe I dreamed this section had an additional element of drama. Tension, maybe.
Listen, I.
Is he gonna make it in time?
I'm not Mr. Hollywood like you. I don't know how all these things work. Alright? I'm just here to have a good time.
Alright, alright, fair enough, fair enough. Alright, mister, like to have a good time. What's the first question?
The first question.
It was very canned.
Okay, hold on, let me try this again. James, the first question on the docket of our council is, how do you apply humanity loss outside of cyberware?
So there's a table about um, specific events triggering humanity loss. Three different amounts of humanity loss. You can trigger for a specific event based on its severity. This stuff is all basically GM fiat. Um, it's for stuff like if a player does something wild and crazy to the tune of, "I just wanted to decapitate them all after killing some guys." And they're not already cyber psycho? Or that doesn't make sense for their character? Because you can be a bad person at any empathy amount. Empathy isn't how good of a guy you are. You know what I mean? So if you do something that is, that would be, you know, psychologically damaging to yourself or something is done to you that would be psychologically damaging to you, like if you get tortured, for example. Um, you can, your GM can apply additional humanity loss to your character.
How do you recommend they do that? 1D6, 1 point, 2 points?
And honestly, that's, that's the way it's done. Um, let me, and the table you want is page 231. It's at the bottom of the page. There we are, found it.
Page 231.
You can edit that down.
Yeah, don't worry. But um, so looking at the book, it was page 231, you said?
Page 231, mental trauma, bottom of the page.
Yeah, the way I always imagined it and um, is it, what does it say? Like 1D6 if they see such and such? It's like a kind of a guide, right?
We're very specific in how we talk about it. Uh, we recommend 1D6 for torture. 1D6 for witnessing particularly horrible death, mutilation, etc. 2D6 for kidnapping, imprisonment, long-term abuse. 2D6 for starvation or being trapped in a war zone, experiencing devastation from long-term disaster, or living in constant danger for a month.
Yeah.
So, if you go back to back, job to job, for a whole month of just like, every three days I'm breaking into a bank and I'm shooting more than two people every time I do it. At the end of that month, you're gonna, you're gonna get 2D6.
Yeah.
You should. You didn't take any time off. You know what I mean? And all you've been doing is kill people. You know what I mean?
So.
Even a hitman needs a day off.
Yeah, even a good hitman needs a day off, right? So gauging, the scale is pretty much 1D6 to 2D6, 2D6 being the worst of it, 1D6 being something. By the way, torture is pretty bad already, so.
Yeah, and it's one incident of torture.
Yeah.
Uh, that could be like four hours. The other stuff is long-term, long-term effects from being in a terrible environment.
Yeah.
So torture is pretty bad. Torture is pretty bad. I think anyone, anyone would agree with that statement.
Yeah, like let's, if you've been tortured for information.
I haven't.
Well, I hope you haven't, Jesus. Uh, me neither. Um, but if you, let's say your character's been tortured for a few hours trying to get some information out of you, 1D6. If you, if you're being tortured over a period of time, you're imprisoned, 2D6, right?
Okay, I would, I would say that's a GM Fiat question, but if you as a GM are like, that you, that, remember when you got tortured before? Well, you're getting tortured in a whole different and exciting way now. Uh, if that's the case, maybe you wouldn't go to that 2D6. I certainly wouldn't go to 3D6 because the thing about rolling 2D6 on humanity is you're very likely to get 7 or higher. Um, and that means you're probably, because it's only 10 points.
You're gonna be bracketed.
For each empathy, you're likely to go down in empathy by one.
Yeah.
And since that is a stat decrease, um, I do not recommend doing higher than 2D6, even to explain long-term stuff. Um, just because it's expensive to get back. Um, it is a real penalty when you put it in. Um, it's meant to be a real and lasting penalty that the player has to um, work to recover um, through downtime, therapy, etc. Uh, and that's, uh, so I would not go, I would not make this the largest tool in your GM toolkit.
Sure.
But when it does happen, it's very thematic and useful.
I will say.
Throw it out a lot. That's, that's, that's pretty rough.
Exactly. It has to have a meaning to it. If you're just like always throwing it around, then I don't think, then it just, it's perceived as you're just trying to hurt your players. But if you introduce it every now and then, it gives it a lot more meaning.
That's why it's not all character, all experiences of death cause it, it's particularly horrifying death.
Yeah, exactly.
If you get those critical injuries or something, or like I shot off both of his arms and then I killed him. That might count.
Yeah.
It has to be special.
Yeah. I personally have never done it. I've never done humanity loss outside of cyberware because I feel like the, the players are kind of hardened, the characters are hardened, and they honestly haven't been through any of those minimum requirements that you mentioned. None of them had been tortured or any of that stuff during our gameplay, maybe in their like life path and stuff, but not during our gameplay. So I've never had to do it.
I've done it twice.
Okay.
Um, the first time, uh, the players were on a cargo plane and there was a person strapped there who had been um, put on the cargo. This, I, by the way, I think this game is on YouTube. Um, but uh, sorry for spoilers. Um, but a woman was on a cargo plane and she was supposed to be someone else, like a mistaken identity. They put the wrong person in this cargo plane, but it's a black op they're going to, so no one's supposed to know about it. So this woman had to die essentially to maintain the, the cover. So it's, and um, when she, the reason why she didn't protest when the plane was taking off or whatever, because she was drugged for the first half of it. So she comes up out of the drug thing and she's on this plane with a bunch of people with guns and she freaks out. And then they have to put her down.
Wow.
And instead of shooting her, they gut-shot her and kicked her out of the airplane.
Oh.
Yeah, and she grabbed the, she did the whole grab the side of the plane thing.
And then slipped.
No, no, that, that, they, they shot the, they shot the hand.
Oh geez.
So, so they, when somebody does that, you have to be like, alright, and your reward today is?
Yeah, you're right. You know, I never thought about that. If there's a player death, like a character, not a player death, Jesus. A character death. If a character dies from the party, I think everybody should take a humanity loss, right? If they were close to them.
I mean, that would be a thematic time to do it, especially if they died in a gory way.
Yeah.
I would say if they died in a heroic-y manner, it might dampen the, um, it depends, it depends. See, that's why it's a GM Fiat thing. Cause we're never gonna be able to know which death was meaningful and, you know, was, it's like we don't get to choose how the movie is edited because we aren't writing it.
Have you thought about rewarding humanity for heroic things like you said?
Um, I think it's an interesting possibility. Um, but I would say even more so than um, than demeriting humanity. It's an even more GM Fiat thing. Here's the other problem with it. Um, whenever you have a reward that you give to your players for good play, um, you never want to give it for acting a certain way as a character, because that gets in the way of how they may wanna, may have wanted to roleplay the scene.
Yeah.
What if their character was like, "but my character is a coward. He would have done that. But I wanted the courage points" or whatever you end up calling the system. Um, so I decided to go against my character. Here's the problem. They may have been doing it for the points instead of doing it for the character moment.
Yeah.
And we wanna, we wanna focus uh, all of the role-playing we can do with all, all the mechanics I make. I wanna make sure I'm making a genuine interaction on the table that isn't like a mechanic chasing thing.
Yeah, I get what you're saying.
I want it to, I want the story to be genuine.
Yeah, I always, uh, I always say that I'd rather not put my players in a position where they have to ignore meta-knowledge or act in a way differently than they wanted to because of meta-knowledge. And this is kind of like along the same vein. Like uh, if they know, i- if, if, if I put some miniatures on the board behind this big rock, they know that that's an ambush. You know, and then I can tell them, "ignore this, don't meta-knowledge and pretend that this isn't here." And they'll do it, but it's ruined the fun. Instead, I just take those miniatures and pop them on the board and they go, "oh my God, we had no idea."
I used to do this thing. This is, this is deep lore. And we are straying away from answering the first question.
Hey, this is what people are tuning in for, alright?
Very well. We have a great FAQ on our webpage, just in case we don't get to anything today.
And we'll get to every question, we promise.
Uh, um, I made this lovely dungeon for um, D and D, my little brother. Um, solo play. He wanted to play two or three characters in a little party. Um, if you have two people and one person's like, "yeah, I wanna play all three people in this party." That's a super fun experience. You've never done it. And it works in Cyberpunk 2. If you've got a one-player game, don't have a one PC game. Have them play three characters.
Yeah.
They're gonna love it.
I can vouch for it. It's pretty cool.
Uh, anyway, um, so I put out this giant dungeon and this is the first time really where I had enough dungeon tiles and kind of just become Vogue. Um, I put out this giant dungeon and I put all my minis from my collection underneath them and I realized he's gonna know exactly where the troll is.
Yeah.
So here's what I did. I took a bunch of plastic cups and I put it over the entire dungeon. And I put the minis under the cups. And when you got into a new room, I removed the fog of war.
Ah, so the plastic, like solo cups, like those red.
Yes.
Solo cups. That's such a great way to do fog of war. I never thought, I was thinking paper, like you put a piece of paper. But then, you know, somebody blows, passes a little bit of gas and there goes all the dungeon. Alright, so.
And it, uh, he loved it.
That's it. So I hope that answered your question about humanity loss.
So definitely.
Yeah.
When you put the plastic cups down, that's when you deduct humanity loss.
Yeah, when they, when the plastic cups come off, that's, it's a new drinking game. You lose humanity, you drink the, the beer and all that. Alright, let's move on to the next question. Does suppressive fire affect allies as well as enemies?
Okay, uh, I believe it says "everyone".
I believe it does too. I've actually seen, I just don't wanna speak out of turn. You got the book. Better if you answer it.
Yep. "Everyone on foot within 25m yards out of cover in your line of sight."
That is on page.
That means everyone. That, 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 174.
Page 174. It affects everybody.
Yes, it affects everybody.
Okay, uh, next question. What is an armor jacket? What does it look like? And what does it look like on my head?
They look different. They all look different.
I believe armor jacket.
Really cool.
It's just a general term, right? Armored jacket.
Yeah, any type, uh, it's not like a, so it's a, it's a heavier duty than like a kevlar. Um, it likely has plates in it. Um, they're heavier, but they're not gonna be as heavy as like.
A heavy armor jacket.
A heavy armor jacket. Or a medium armor jacket. A light armor jacket is still light. Um, that's why it doesn't slow down your movement at all. You'll notice when we start going into medium armor jacket and heavy armor jacket, you're actually moving slower. So that'll give you an idea of how heavy it is. Right? Um, if something's slowing you down while you move with it, it's gotta be pretty heavy.
Yeah.
Or at least unwieldy. Light armor jacks are, um, are cut for, okay, how hard can we go without impeding motion? What do they look like though? Well, uh, they look like a jacket. It's an armored jacket. Um.
Whatever flavor of jacket you want. And that's the good thing about cyberpunk. It could be a suit jacket. It could be a leather jacket. It could be a, uh, the club jacket, those ones that you get from high school, like the varsity jackets. It could be whatever you want, as well as the hats. It's just a reinforced armored hat is what you're wearing. Some kind of the, the piece of clothing on your head. It could even be a bandana. And in fact, in 2020, back in the day, they had like, one of the supplements had like this armored bandana that I remember. Um, but yeah, that's basically up to you. In my games, if my player doesn't want to roleplay with a hat on, sometimes I'll let them get subdermal armor instead on their head. For like at a, at a little bit of a reduced cost, like I throw them a little bit of a bone. Because just to give them that extra roleplay. But I'm, I'm a nice game master.
I will, you are very, that is a very nice thing to do. Not on my table, please. Um, please pay for your subdermal armor.
Yeah.
Uh, deduct extra humanity loss. No, um. So, one of the cool parts about Red um, is that wearing head armor is less important than it used to be. Um, but it's still very important. Still a very important part of your body to have armor on if you think you're going to go into a firefight. Um, so foregoing a helmet has never been easier. If your character wouldn't wear a helmet in this situation, they're likely not gonna wear a helmet.
Yeah.
If you want to wear a helmet, wear a helmet. Um, but now more than ever in this edition, um, it's a lot less, um, what do we, what do we, how do we say?
Common.
Uh, it's a lot less mechanically punishing.
Gotcha. Because it is much, it is much harder to aim for the head. It's a called shot. It's a minus eight or a plus eight to the DV.
Um, I believe so. I don't know the number off the top of my head.
I'm pretty sure it's an eight because it was a six in the jumpstart kit and it even, I think you guys upped it to eight. Or was it, was it, I think it was six in the beta, you upped it to eight.
I don't.
I don't remember.
It is a minus eight. It is a minus eight.
So that, that means that you have to use luck. Not only do you have to be really proficient in the skill that you're using, you have to have some kind of outside help. Whether it's like a targeting scope and, and luck, and even then, you might not have enough to be able to hit somebody in the head. So.
It is a high-end solo thing. Most, um, most firearms training in IRL will tell you to shoot center of mass.
Yeah, exactly.
It's kind of weird to be like, "yeah, I'm gonna get the headshots." It's, it's a Call of Duty thing. It's not a.
Yeah.
It's not a real world thing.
By the way, in our last Patreon game that I had, one of my players rolled double sixes on his auto-fire with the assault rifle, 48 damage. Oh man, he shredded, shredded that poor dude. Shredded him. It was amazing. It was great. We got the, uh, it was like severed arm or something, so the idea was like you just like unloaded on him and ripped his arm off with your shots.
And he got a good crit.
Yeah.
Nice.
So good. Alright, so there you go.
Good crit.
Uh, I hope that answers your question about armor jacks. Be, it's really just opens up creativity to whatever your players wanna dress like and look like. They don't have to, not everybody has to look like military or SWAT or anything like that. It's style over substance. That's what cyberpunk's all about and it's, it's the human ingenuity of protecting yourself.
And if you do wanna like combine it with, uh, like, let's say you're wearing, uh, like in the fashion section, you bought, uh, gang colors bomber jacket. You could totally combine those together.
Oh my gosh.
You could layer them however, however you wanna do it.
Okay, let's try to, let's try to blow past like at least four more because we almost did half an hour already.
Yeah.
Yeah, let's try to blow, alright, we're gonna not get.
Back on our website.
Yeah, yeah. We're, we're not gonna, we're not gonna go too long on these. We'll try to blow past as many as we can. Alright, stealth takedowns. How does stealth work in a group? Uh, is there extra damage?
Um, so no, there's no extra damage for stealth. Um, how does it work in a group? Um, you can all hold your action. Um, and guess it can work simultaneous. Uh, there is a specific answer that is much longer on our website. Um, I don't have it in front of me and we are running out of time. Um, but if that question is specifically answered in the fact, yes.
Alright, can you use charismatic impact in place of social skills?
Um, no, but you can use it alongside social skills.
For example?
In, uh, for example, um,
Conversation, let's say.
Convert, so you're still talking to somebody, you're rolling conversation. Uh, that can give you, uh, so charismatic impact only does the thing that it says it does. It's not a whole social package. It's getting people to like you and then getting them to do things for you. If that was all you did with your conversation skill, then the answer is yes. However, there are many other things that conversation skills can do that are not that specific thing I just said. Um, that's why it's kind of a false equivalency. There are differences. You can't use it in place of like acting, for example. Um, and a good rocker boy should have both.
Yeah, uh, really quickly as an example, I would say if you're using charismatic impact and you fail, uh, according to the rules, if you wanna do it again, you need something that, that has changed to better your chances to be able to do that charismatic impact again. Maybe you have a conversation with this NPC, you do a conversation check, you pass that. And then NPC says, "wait a minute, what, where did you say? What band you were from? You said before?" And then now the GM can give you a plus one on your charismatic impact to try to do it again. That's, that's some way of using the skill alongside of the special ability. What do you think about that, James?
Um, so technically it's a roll ability, not a skill check, so I'm not sure.
So you can't do that.
Skill would be useful, would be usable.
I didn't know that.
It's an ability, not a skill check.
Interesting. I didn't know that abilities are separate from that rule.
Uh, I think so.
Okay. Alright, sounds good. Uh, other than access to vehicles, what makes a nomad different?
Uh, you get to upgrade them. Um, you get massive, massive bonuses to driving. Um, you get an inborn group of people who probably like you. That's a big one. Just the role-play ability of, "I have this thing called a family."
Yeah.
And they like me. And you're putting me in peril. So I might call Uncle Steve.
Yeah, I believe you can use your nomad.
Crack shot.
I believe you could use your nomad special ability for vehicle tech, any kind of vehicle tech too, right?
Yeah, vehicle tech as well. So it makes sense because you're really good at driving a car. You probably can fix it too.
Yeah, exactly. So if you're in a scenario.
It stops them from having to, honestly, it stops them from having to dump a bunch of points in those to feel relevant.
Sure.
And it allows anyone who has the nomad ability to be a nomad.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Let's do one more. Uh, the smoke grenade, according to the rules, lasts for one minute on the battlefield. And this question is, it covers the, pretty much the whole battlefield of an entire combat if it's one minute.
No, it doesn't do that.
Uh, that's, that's the question that someone was asking. Does it cover the whole battlefield?
It covers a 10 by 10 area.
So it covers a 10 by 10 area.
That's a lot.
That is pretty big, yeah.
A lot of combats are larger than that and a lot of combats are smaller than that.
Yeah.
Uh, it would be very fun in a nightclub. Um, but uh, maybe not, it wouldn't cover the whole street and you still have the question of, "do I fire into the smoke?" Or do I perhaps hang back, hold my action in case anybody comes out of the smoke? Um, one of the things about smoke grenades, uh, that's pretty good is if you have infrared while you're throwing them. Because then they're penalized, you're not. Um, people seem to really like the smoke grenades on the Reddit, um, which is great. Um, but just remember that people can run out of them. You know what I mean? The smoke grenade is only as useful as you are able to tactically place the cloud.
Okay.
Um, yeah, if I'm not, if you threw a smoke grenade and I ran the other direction and then I shot you, smoke grenade didn't really do much, did it?
Yeah, exactly.
Why? If you wanted me, if all you wanted was me to run in the other direction so that your friends could gun me down, then you've properly tactically used a smoke grenade. You flushed me out.
Alright, sounds good. Okay. Alright, sounds good. Okay, I think that's it for today. Uh, because we still have some DLCs to talk about. If you guys have any more questions, please, please send them to me. We are nearing the end of our, I believe we only have twenty more questions in the books. So if there's any more questions that you guys have, please let us know and we are happy to answer them. There's no ten actually, twenty-nine, four, eleven, it looks like. So we have eleven questions left on our document and there's a lot of room for more. So go ahead and message me on social media, Reddit, whatever it is, or johnjohnthewise@gmail.com. I'll collect all your questions and we will answer them just as we have. So thank you guys. Thank you guys so much. Hashtag Night City Council. Alright, you ready? Let's start talking about some weather. Oh, the weather outside. Alright, today we're going to be talking. You're gonna get it open?
Pull up this free DLC on our website.
That's right.
See how easy it is. Let's see how easy it is to pull up a free DLC off the arcal sorin games.com website.
How much is the free DLC, James?
I think it's free.
Oh, okay.
But let me check. It might charge me. I don't know. It could have changed since the last time I downloaded one yesterday.
So we have here from our tel sorin games, Night City Weather.
It was free. It was totally free.
Alright, they let you through to get that free DLC.
Let me through and they didn't charge me this time either.
Uh, Night City Weather, the sky is crying blood. Oof, dramatic. So, in this DLC, this brand new DLC, the folks at our tal sorin games have given us an amazing resource for trying to figure out what the weather is like in the area that you're in. There's a bunch of charts here to let you know depending on what months you're in between. Uh, you roll a one D six and it lets you know if it's cold, around what temperature and the current conditions. And then these conditions mean something. On top of that, they also have this one D ten chart for strange weather. Do you see that? Why don't you tell us a little bit about this strange weather there?
I love the strange weather chart. We got radioactive windstorms, we got ash storms, we got flooding, blood rain, acid rain, deadly thunderstorms, inversion smog, a cold snap, a heatwave, dust storm, a blackout.
And next to, and then next to your results is also how long it lasts. Some of them are one D six times ten minutes, one D six days, one D six hours, and that actually all comes into play in our next section, which is ruling the weather. Now, before we move on, I would say I recommend that you do all of this rolling on these charts and determining all these things before your, your session. So you don't have to worry about any of this stuff. You don't have to try to remember rules. Just have it like written down on a piece of paper and you're like, alright guys, here. Take a look at this. I'm, I'm putting it on the wall. I'm taping it on the wall. It's ra- acid rain today. Alright? So that's what's going on right now.
I, I like it as a, um, you roll right before the session uh, to determine, um, because anything that was gonna happen that day is probably still gonna happen that day unless there's something really crazy.
Sure.
Right? Um, so I like to roll before the session, right as the session starts, just explain, sort of set the scene, you know? What's going on today? Well, there's acid rain and, uh, you know, they're still holding the market. Uh, they had to put up a bunch of umbrellas.
A bunch of umbrellas. So in the next section, after you've rolled and you figured out what's going on with the weather, what the temperature's like, is it overcast, all that? Then we look at the rules. And in this section, they, you guys have figured out what temperatures, what they mean. So for example, looking at hot temperature, the temperature has risen to an uncomfortable degree. Increase in, increase any pre-existing armor penalty to reflex dexterity and move by one. For example, if you had a minus two penalty, it now becomes a minus three penalty. So this really penalizes people that have the heavy stuff on because they already had the minus two, giving them a minus three. But also if you have a light armor jack which is at a zero, it now becomes a minus one, right?
Uh, so.
Or is it only if there's a penalty?
It's only if there's a pre-existing armor penalty.
Gotcha. So medium armor.
Penalty is zero, it's not a penalty.
Okay, gotcha. So the idea.
Penalize you for nothing.
Gotcha, gotcha. So that's hot temperature. Let's talk about, why don't you pick one of the conditions and weather and talk about that?
Let's, yeah, we can't, this, this document, by the way, is like six pages. It's totally chock full.
Yeah.
Every page is like crammed full of text. It's like a Rosetta Stone.
Yeah. It adds a really fun, uh, element to your games, like an outside, outside, you know, natural disaster kind of thing.
Yeah, Jay Gray did a great job on this. This is his baby.
Shout out.
I would super, super happy to be able to help. Um, he just brought it out and I was like, ah, this is fantastic. I'm gonna help.
It's really good.
Um, alright, alright. Blood rain. I've gotta bring up blood rain first because blood rain is one of my favorites. Blood rain is an aftereffect of the fourth corporate war. It's a greasy, pinkish-red form of precipitation. And it carries various caustic substances, toxins and radiation. Uh, you roll a one D six. On a one to three, the blood rain acts as just like acid rain, although it smells much worse. Um, on a four to six, uh, once per minute, treat anyone exposed to blood rain without protection as if they were dosed with a vial of biotoxin. And GMs can at their discretion apply the minus one penalty to perception checks to see and ranged attack checks to hit if it's a, if it's a, like a heavy blood rain.
Yeah, uh, to added this.
Heavy blood rain won't damage you more. It won't damage you less. Um, but it will also add a vision penalty.
Gotcha. So, um.
That's with any of the rains too.
Yeah, if you're within the rain for more than a minute, is that what it is? Is that what that means? Or once per minute?
Um, it is once per minute, treat anyone exposed to blood rain without protection.
Yeah, okay. So if you're exposed to it and you have no protection, which we'll get into in the next section. If you don't have any protection, then that's what will happen to you. And it also in the document tells you what page in the core rulebook to go to, page three fifty-five to check out biotoxins and see what their effects are. But basically, this gives your players an extra element of roleplay of trying to figure out, you know, us getting from point A to point B has now become more of an issue. It, it's not just getting in our car and going there. It's making sure we have an umbrella, making sure we have protective gear because we cannot be dealing with any blood rain right now.
Yeah, um, I'm pretty happy with the, um, the protections that we were able to work out in here.
Yeah.
Um, why don't, I'm, I'm gonna give you a chance. Why don't you read one of the, uh, conditions and weather that you like.
Sure, sure.
And, and we are missing so many of these right now.
I know. There's so many.
Six pages. It's fully stocked.
Let's do a deadly thunderstorm. While thunderstorms are rare in Night City, when they happen, they trend, they trend towards incredibly destructive. Once per ten minute period, so as you see the time limits of how long it's going on, it plays a factor in here. Once per ten minute period during the storm, the GM should roll one D six. On a one to a three, the lightning strikes far away. On a four to a six, the lightning strikes the tallest nearby structure or natural feature. If there is no such structure or natural feature nearby, it strikes either the tallest character or the character holding a two-handed melee metal weapon. If the character struck is touching another character, they are both struck. Anybody hit by lightning takes sixty-six damage to their body and the lightning strike counts as a flashbang grenade. Page three forty-six in the core rulebook. And centered on the struck character. Also, GMs can at their discretion apply a minus two penalty to any appropriate skill checks, including perception checks to see and ranged attack checks to hit a target at a distance. So a lightning strike is nasty. It's God touching you and, and, and it hurts. Sixty-six really hurts. So if you guys are out in the open in an open field, let's say you're not in a city. You're out in the open, it's an open field, there is no tall structure. One of your buddies is gonna get hit by lightning. And that's just what's gonna happen.
One of my favorite ideas with this is that players will suddenly want to be shorter than each other.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah, you know, you're.
Right, like, you're like six feet, right? Like, I, I was always five-ten, actually.
What does it say on your character sheet? Don't lie. Put down the eraser. Put down.
Exactly. It's like, oh no, it says I'm six-five on my character sheet. Oh, how dare I?
You want to be tall and good looking and look what happened, alright?
Right? Yeah, tall and good looking and holding a sniper rifle with both hands into the air, like a lightning rod.
So yeah, this adds a whole new element. Like now we have to go walk through the forest because the trees are taller than us. So if we get hit by lightning, it's gonna be the trees. But eh, once per ten minutes during the storm, the GM rolls one B six. So, you know, I might do one of those where I, I roll behind the screen and not.
Oh, I was about to say, John John, you know, you know that you, these random tables, they don't have to, they don't have to go the way you say they.
No, no, no. You don't have to tell, you don't have to say anything, alright? You could be whatever you want.
And you're, you're completely fine with just putting weather conditions into your game without rolling for them.
Yeah.
The rolling system is if you wanted to do this every day. Um, you know, if you're doing like a, um, like a West Marshes thing where you've got a bunch of people playing all on the same day, you create a weather calendar for whatever day the adventure happens on.
Exactly.
You could roll out your weather for months.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and there'll be a difference based on what month it is because we put in the different seasons on the table.
Oh, you could do like a forecast too where they'll be like, you know.
Yeah, totally. You could do a seven day forecast. They could watch, you could watch Night City news.
And the forecast can be wrong. Like dude, they said it was gonna be acid rain and it's thunderstorm.
Right, right, yeah. You roll a D six on a five or six, the forecast is wrong. Take that to the bank.
Yeah, I love it.
Not in, that's not in this document, but you can take that. Use it at your table.
Exactly. Now, James, let me ask you this. What can we do to protect ourselves from this strange weather?
Well, I'm glad you asked, John John. Um, on page six. Uh, there's a section called new right here.
Oh my goodness, tell us all about it.
I know. It's the page right after what you just read.
Oh, wow. I just had to go one more page.
You think you could flip a page, but you need me here to help.
I'm glad you're here.
Um, okay, okay. Uh, there is hot, there's a hot and cold weather jacket lining. Uh, there is also a waterproof jacket lining and these will protect you against certain of the weathers, but not certain of the other weathers. These also count for the exposure rules, um, in the core rulebook. Because we did have exposure rules that were kind of open-ended in the core rulebook that basically stated if you're somewhere where you're not supposed to be for what you're wearing, here's what happens to you. Um, and we only ever, we have a special rule in there, but it's just for space.
Yeah.
Because we figured some people would want to do higher writers stuff before we did anything with it. Um, so what I'm saying is here is where the game mechanics of that fall in. So this is how you get your cold weather gear for the Arctic. This is where you get your cold weather gear for the Sahara. It's all explicitly detailed. Uh, you'll notice I did not mention umbrellas because that's the one I really wanted to talk about.
Yeah.
Um, so all these linings have something in common. It's that they're expensive. They're all five hundred dollars.
Minimum.
And I know you're gonna say, what, a poncho costs five hundred dollars in Night City? And that is not what we are talking about. That is not what a waterproof jacket lining is. We're, we're talking like high-end trail equipment um, for like Rangers and.
We're talking about pimping your armor jack.
Yes.
This is what we're talking about.
One of the things that they can do if in case you were a big fan of heavier armors is you can lower that penalty by one. You'll notice that that does not protect you against the hottest hot, uh, which is the opposite of cold snap, a heatwave. Um, which is kind of interesting because we actually wrote this during a heatwave.
Yeah, exactly.
Um, at least in, at least in Seattle. Uh, Jay's in New York, so.
I think, oh, it's like flooding over there. It was like five minutes of flooding, I think.
We always hear some crazy other weather.
Yeah, I know, right?
Weather's, weather's been going crazier and crazier, it seems. Um, anyway, um, personally, I think it's witches.
Bruheria, as my wife would call it.
Uh, anyway, uh, so for everything else, you can just carry an umbrella. And why is carrying an umbrella cool? When it only costs ten dollars to buy an umbrella?
Mm-hmm.
It's because it takes up one of your hands. So now you have that cool scene, right? Where you're all in Japan town, carrying the umbrellas, right? And you still have to shoot somebody.
Or you can have your tech build the umbrella into your helmet. And you could look really cool in the combat zone with your umbrella helmet.
I think that is the fastest way to join the bozos I have ever heard. I think if the bozos rolled up on you with your umbrella helmet, they'd be like, this guy's onto something.
He's one of ours. Keep moving.
This innovation in our gang. Bring him in. Let's page him up.
Oh, man. So yeah, you could definitely have an umbrella or you could have the better umbrella, which is?
I forgot one more thing.
Oh, please.
When I, when I mentioned that the, uh, the plus one from the hot weather lining was not enough to be able to, uh, get rid of the hot, the heatwave condition, well, you could always upgrade it as a tech.
There it is. See?
That's why we made it a plus one and not a plus two.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we designed with techs in mind, so keep, keep that in mind. Um, militech tactical umbrella. Do you want to read it?
Sure, sure. This is great. So, so an umbrella is ten euro bucks. But a military ta- a militech tactical umbrella is a thousand euro bucks. And part of militech's armed executive line. The tactical umbrella is perfect for anyone who wants to look top shelf without sacrificing the protection promised to them by the constitution. Oh man, America, dude. Militech's tactical umbrella protects against acid and blood rain, just like a regular umbrella. But it is also a, it is also two weapons in one. An excellent quality exotic heavy melee weapon, which, I mean, come on now. And a poor quality exotic heavy pistol that can be loaded with both basic and non-basic ammunition. The militech tactical umbrella's clip holds two bullets and must be reloaded just like a typical heavy pistol. And if you guys want more information on what an excellent and poor quality item is, page three forty-two of the core rulebook explains exactly what that means. Now, if I'm getting this right, you can whack somebody with this thing for three D six, ignoring half of armor as an, as a heavy melee weapon and excellent quality, I believe gives it a plus one to hit, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, and then also it is a poor quality exotic heavy pistol doing.
I'm so happy you figured this out so quickly.
Doing three D six with a rate of fire two at a minus one to hit because it is poor quality.
Uh, no.
No? Isn't that not? Oh, no, no. No, sorry. It jams, it jams on a roll of a one. That's what it is. That's right. So if you roll a one, your, your umbrella is now just an umbrella that can whack people. Unless you unjam the weapon.
And it's after it fires, by the way, so you still get that shot off.
Oh, that's interesting. I didn't know that. Today I learned.
This is important for rocket launchers.
Oh, yeah. So you jam the rocket launcher, but you get the shot off?
Quick.
Yeah, so, uh, I mean, how cool is that militech tactical umbrella? And are we gonna see an Arasaka line? Or, uh?
I, I cannot speak about future products.
Uh, I mean, they gotta compete.
I, I promise if we ever, if we ever sell an artal branded umbrella, um, we will include with the game statistics.
Oh, yes, please do.
That's a promise from the heart. If we ever get into the umbrella market, we will do it that way.
I demand an artal sorin umbrella if that ever happens, okay? You heard it from here, folks, alright? I need protection from the blood rain.
Alright, so, no, but the, the cool part is they're both ROF two weapons.
Exactly.
So you can hit somebody with the umbrella and then shoot them with the umbrella.
Man, it's like the gunblade, but even better. It, does a gunblade protect you from acid rain? No. So there we go. Uh, first of all, it's fun. It's what, this is what Cyberpunk's all about, an item like this. It's obviously designed, it's called the militech's armed executive line. It's designed for execs to have some sort of protection and to have some sort of protection, if you know what I mean. to have some sort of protection, if you know what I mean. It's two different types of protection for the executive.
Point out that any item can be cool in a kung fu movie.
True.
Remember that scene with the ladder?
In uh, which one was this?
I think it was a, it's a Jackie Chan movie?
The Drunken Master?
Something. There's, there's an awesome scene where there's this guy using this ladder to beat the heck out of people. And I'm like, that is the coolest ladder on television. I want that ladder's autograph.
Or the folded-up magazine in Jason Bourne. Matt Damon folds up a magazine and beats somebody with it.
Yeah, uh, it, I, I always felt like for, for all the Jason Bourne movies, like if he had a gun, he'd put it down and pick up like a mayonnaise jar or something. Cuz he's more deadly with the mayonnaise jar than he would be with the gun.
He has a way higher kill count with mayonnaise.
This is not a weapon. This is a weapon.
Oh man, they'll expect me to use a gun.
Right.
Not the sandwich.
But I'm, when I walk at them slowly with the sandwich.
So anyway, to round out.
Begin to swell.
That's it. To round out this uh, DLC, the Night City Weather, as you can see, it doesn't have to be in Night City, it's just a fun name. And it adds so many cool elements. And like I said, uh, the, like, stuff like the thunderstorm is better outside of a city. It adds a whole new element. You know what I mean? So play with it, have fun with it. Um, and oh, I forgot to mention, there was like, one of them that gave you a critical injury. Uh, so like some of them give you a critical injury. Here we go, for dust storm. Uh, if you don't have an anti-smog breathing mask or nasal filter, you suffer the foreign object critical injury as the dust clogs your lungs and sinuses.
That one, that one's nasty.
That's, see, how fun is that? Giving your players a critical injury?
Right, right. And uh, foreign object.
Yeah.
It's just like, I don't, how do I, it's the most, it's the grossest thing.
Yeah, we gotta pump your lungs, dude, to get that stuff out of there.
Is the idea that it would get in your nose.
Yeah, exactly. Alright, we are nearing the end, so let's move on to our next DLC. Thank you guys so much for that one. I can't wait to use that, that weather one. Um, let's move on to.
I hear Texas is a lot of crazy weather.
Yeah, it's gonna have a lot of crazy weather. They're gonna be like, it was blood rain yesterday and it's a dust storm today. It's like, yeah, man, time of the red is wild.
Storm all week.
All week, alright? I'll make it two weeks if you complain. So let's move on to Old Guns Never Die, a way to port your Cyberpunk twenty-twenty weapons to guns and melee weapons to Cyberpunk Red. So.
Yep.
You wanna tell us a little bit about this, James?
The thing about Old Guns Never Die, it's a conversion guide. Um, it lets you take the weapons you were using in twenty-twenty and move them into Red. Obviously, sometimes the answer in Old Guns Never Die is, if there is a crazy weird effect on this gun that is not currently in the game, you will need to work on it yourself. Um, it's not a genie lamp, it's not a magic eight ball. Um, It'll do most of the work for you in terms of a conversion, but that last step might need to be filled in by you working with your game master. Um, especially if you wanna bring in some crazy stuff. Um, but for most things, it works.
Exactly.
The key, the key there is um, is allowing it to be a different, um, allowing your idea of what it is to sort of mold a little bit more into the newer system. Because it is, there was a lot of stuff about guns in twenty-twenty that made them look different, but did not make them really that different. Um, and in Red, we're focused on the big differences between guns and uh, things we can theme into attachments. So whenever you're in that section, you're gonna make them big and different. Um, otherwise, we're looking for a baseline model to then put stuff on.
Yeah.
To make your gun unique.
Yeah, so like as step, um.
Same philosophy, more, it's a, it's a different interpretation that works faster and is more streamlined.
Exactly. So in this DLC, it's only three pages, but the first page is just the cover, so it's really two pages. And it's very simple to use. The first step, they, it, it asks for the weapon, try to match it to the closest weapon you can that is in Cyberpunk Red. So I'm gonna use uh, right here, we have the Militec. This is from Home of the Brave, a Cyberpunk twenty-twenty supplement. I highly recommend it. It is even for Cyberpunk Red players. It is an amazing supplement for learning about the, the, not just the lore, but like encompassing what is going on in the, in the world of Cyberpunk, what it feels like. Um, but yeah, so the weapon I have here is the Militec Arms Mark IV Assault Weapon. And I'm looking for any signs to tell me what weapon it will be close to. I'm seeing it's a US military rifle, and for the damage here, it says it is five D six using five-five-six millimeter rounds. So I, I think we can all agree that this is an assault rifle that does five D six damage. So that's the closest weapon from Cyberpunk Red that we can bring to it, right?
Yeah, that's the closest weapon category, but let's build more on that.
Exactly.
Uh, let's go to step two. Um, what's the weapon accuracy for that weapon? Because it, sue me, I don't remember off the top of my head, every weapon from twenty-twenty.
What? You don't remember this, this one book from page eighty-two?
I can't memorize the entirety of Black Hand's Guide, sorry.
Exactly. Uh, so this has a weapon accuracy of a plus-one.
Okay, so um, in step two, flatten weapon accuracy, if it has a plus-one, that makes it an excellent-quality weapon in Cyberpunk Red. So now we have an excellent-quality assault rifle.
Mm-hmm.
And we go to step three, flatten reliability. What's reliability?
It is.
They would be all rel.
It is uh, VR, very reliable.
Very reliable. So if it is very reliable, that means it is not, uh, it does not malfunction in Cyberpunk Red. Uh, which means that we skip step three.
Exactly. Alright, so step, uh, and then step four, we can skip cuz we, that is the weapons quality.
Quality in step two.
Exactly.
Um, so step five is to strip any old weapon attachments off of the weapon and replace them from similar ones from Red.
Now, I will mention that it does not come with attachments, but it is mentioned.
Magazine size.
The magazine size is thirty-five.
So that is that is ten higher.
Ten higher, yeah.
It's ten higher, correct? That is ten higher than twenty-five, which is the base. So that means that we get to put on it an extended magazine, which I believe brings it up exactly to thirty-five.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that would be an excellent, so now we have an excellent-quality assault rifle with an extended magazine.
Now, it also says, in, in the flavor text, it is designed to accept all US military rifle accessories, including the M-two-oh-five grenade launcher. It can mount the Militec Mini Grenade Launcher Pump version under the barrel instead. Well, we actually have that attachment in the Cyberpunk Red Core Rulebook, so you can add a mini grenade launcher for the little mount under it for the pump.
So, and the best part is you put in the um, excellent-quality assault rifle. We put in the extended mag that takes up one attachment slot. Then, we have two attachment slots left, and guess what costs two attachment slots? Under barrel grenade launcher.
Exactly.
So a lot of people sort of think the weapons in uh, they might think the weapons are a little bit more generic, but really, we have these rules to build whatever weapon you really want in Red, and we were able to convert that pretty directly.
Yeah.
Like, that, you didn't pick that, you picked that at random, right?
Random, random. I, I just totally went and picked one randomly.
That, that was almost a one-to-one. I feel like it's almost too good.
Yeah.
A little false advertising there. Sometimes you will need your GM to step in and go, okay, but this is, this attachment isn't in Red yet, so what do we do?
Do you wanna try another one?
Don't, maybe, don't go looking for one that's a little harder?
Um, yeah, no, I mean, we can try one.
You know what? Let's do it. Let's test the system.
Let's try another one here. Uh, this is good. It's a, the Barrett M-ninety Sniper Rifle. So obviously Barrett can't be used, it has to be some other brand. I mean, you could do whatever you want, it's your game.
You can call it a Barrett in your game if you want. You just can't get away with that.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, for legal reasons.
So according to this, it fires fifty caliber rounds. And a cyber-linked version is available for twenty-five-hundred Eddies. But that, so it says here it's a six D-ten damage, which is not something that is in Cyberpunk Red. So how would we remedy that?
Um.
Sniper rifles do five D-six. Um, I, I think we would have to make it an excellent quality off the bat, no matter what.
Yeah, it's a, it's an, I would say it's an excellent quality. Um, I'd put a smart link on it, which is two attachment slots. And then I'd put a sniper scope on it because it's a sniper rifle.
Yeah, it's also plus-three weapon accuracy. So this is like a super weapon.
So that, um, and then after that, you're out your three attachment slots, you've got your excellent quality. Um, that's what I believe it would be, just because I don't think you'd need a really large extended magazine if you have that accurate of a long-range rifle.
Yeah.
You should not need more than bullets.
Mm-hmm.
If you wanted the extended accuracy, you could always upgrade it with the tech to get another attachment slot and put an extended mag on it. Um, I, I think it would be pretty dumb to put a drum on it.
Would uh, would making it.
Like to be dumb sometimes.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's the fun part.
That's, exactly.
What do you think about making it six D-six instead of just the five D-six? Do you think it's too big?
So what I would do for that is um, internally, um, if I were to make a gun like that, I would jack it up to five grand.
Mm-hmm.
At least, and it would be an exotic. Um.
Yeah.
I think, I don't, I don't think that's listed in the maker ability, I, there.
I don't think so either, no.
Oh, I, I'm pretty sure I deliberately left it off the maker ability because it was a little imbalancing. Um, just because at sixty, when you're rolling sixty-sixes, you have to think every one of those things is a grenade.
Yeah, exactly. And, and the, the critical injury chance, you know what I mean?
Yes, critical injury chance. And also with the aiming um, potential, you're trying to get the, the most accurate shot, right? You gotta consider that there's a thing available to everyone that can double the damage.
Yeah, exactly.
Shooting them in the head.
So maybe, so increasing accuracy is actually very powerful in itself because you're subtracting the negative quality of a called shot. So if you add a smart link, make it an excellent quality and maybe throw another plus-one in there from something, uh, we're at a plus-three, or even a plus-two is a pretty insane amount.
I would do smart link, excellent quality, and then have a targeting scope on your eye, and you're looking, you're looking pretty good for some sniping fun.
Exactly.
Um.
So you can do called shots to the head from an insane distance compared to any other weapons.
Say on that one.
Yeah. So there it is. So yeah, so in that example is a little bit harder. But um, but you're still able to do it. And guess what? Now when I'm playing with my players and they open up a crate that was buried under a bunch of cars in a wreck somewhere, and they open up a Militec crate and they see that assault rifle, I can tell them exactly what it is. I can put a name to it, I can tell them what stats it has. And now every single one of these books that I have here, including this one, is a resource for me to add cool, unique items to my game. And that's all thanks to a free DLC from Artel Saurian Games. How about that? Alright, so I think that's about it. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for joining us. We will be back in session for Night City Council to talk about more stuff. I can't wait. There's a lot of exciting things coming. Uh, make sure you guys go out there and get your data screens. Um, it is available on Artel Saurian's website. Retailers should have it as well pretty soon. I'm still waiting for mine to get it. He always gets it last. Poor guy. Um, but you know, I'm gonna talk to Jay about it, try to figure out what's going on with that. But yeah, like I said, you can get it directly from Artel Saurian's website or go to your local shop. And it is also part, part of the Bits and Mortar Program, which means that if you buy the physical copy from your shop, the shop can, if they're part of the program, which it's easy to do, you just sign up. Um, and if they're part of the program, they can give you a digital copy of the, of the data screen as well. So there you go, you can have it digitally too. Anything else you wanna mention before we sign off here, Mayor?
Oh, I think by now people know they can get free DLCs on artelsauriangames.com, so I don't need to re- mention again that you can get free DLCs on artelsauriangames.com.
Slash downloads, or download. Hold on, I have it here. Slash. Artel, hold on, I wanna make sure that I got it right. Game aids and DLCs, yeah, downloads.
Downloads, you heard it here. Spell it right.
ArtelsaurianGames.com slash downloads.
And you shall be rewarded.
You shall be set free. James, thank you so much.
We're excited to get you some new stuff coming up, some new free DLCs. I think the next one is gonna be an absolute banger.
Oh man, I can't wait. Oh, we still got the hard.
Not gonna, not gonna spoil, spoil anything, but you'll be, you'll get the sense of accomplishment.
My, my beating heart be still. James, thank you so much uh, for doing this for the community. I really appreciate it. I'm, I missed you and it was great to see you, and I can't wait to see you again.
Thanks for hosting.
Of course, anytime. Now remember, guys, johnjohnthewise@gmail.com or social media and everywhere, that's where you can find me. Other than that, our council is in session. Ladies and gentlemen, uh, be, get an umbrella, there's blood rain out there, alright? We'll see you later. Have a good one. Bye.
Bye.